We'll call tonight's meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, thanks again to everyone for coming out tonight. We call the roll, please.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. So, the first item on our agenda is the much awaited State of the City. It's a special presentation that I'm going to give. And to put everyone at ease, it's only two pages. So, it's not a big, long presentation, so. 2023 has been an incredible year filled with milestones, community partnerships, and exciting developments. The city has seen tremendous growth in the development of housing options for our community. Several new housing developments are currently under construction to accommodate the rising population and enhance the housing choices available to residents. The prior two decades have shown little residential growth in Clayton. The result was the city had been, had trouble attracting new businesses, with the exception of some businesses like Caterpillar, we had, were able to bring them in, and, you know, other, others, La Fiesta, some of these other businesses. But we, overall, we've had trouble attracting them because we've, we've really had slow growth. Currently, there are about 250-plus single-family homes and apartments under construction. The apartment community at Hoke &amp; Forty is nearly complete, and the single-family development at Union and Westbrook is well under construction. Many of these homes have been sold, and many of the lots have already been purchased. Roadstar Trucking is near completion right here on Forty-Nine, so that's another, you know, piece to the puzzle here. We're hoping that we can, that it will allow other businesses to come in. Businesses beget businesses. The city council's been hard at work, setting new goals, reviewing and revising rules concerning proposed charter revisions. We're proud to announce the successful implementation of, of our electrical aggregate. Hopefully, that will enhance our city's sustainability and, and help our residents directly. In, in June of 2023, city council passed a resolution which allowed the city to enter into an agreement with the Kleiningers Group to complete a thorough fair plan. Again, for a city our size to have a robust development plan going ahead is unusual. You know, we, we've done a lot of work on our zoning, we've done a lot of work on our land use, and now with this thorough plan, it'll lay, overlay both of those also, and should, again, help us guide, you know, how we go forward. This was from an action item recommended by the Plan Clayton Implementation Committee, which was a committee of our citizens, and it was also in the five-year economic development plan. So, we're trying to get to the point where everything, all of our plans mesh and that they do not conflict with each other. Because we found some of that in some of our council rules and charter and things. The charter revision group discovered a couple of things that actually conflicted with the way we've been doing business. So, as we find those things, we're trying to fix them so that, you know, we all mesh. Again, th- those are things, you know, I think you find those in other cities too, but I give credit to, you know, to these folks up here and to our, the residents that served on those committees and to our staff, that when we find those kind of things, we try to fix them going forward. Our fire collaborative, the Clayton, Union, Inglewood collaborative efforts continue to show significant money savings in all three of our cities. They how, all three have decreased response times and increase in service levels to our whole Northmont community. This has really been a home run for, for all three of our cities, including us here in Clayton. We okayed the purchase of a Lucas device and a power stair chair for strike, from Stryker Medical Emergency Care. These kind of devices are examples of our city, Clayton, utilizing technology to enhance service to our residents. It reduces injury to our first responders, and it reduces the response times. So, again, you know, these are investments that we're making. You know, we're not out spending money, you know, to fulfill the budget or, or to just go out buy things. There, there's reasons that we sent, that we, we spend this money. Our police department did an excellent job in 2023. The safety of our residents remains the city's very highest priority. Of all the things that we talk about, any city's highest priority is the safety of our residents. And if residents are not safe, then we're not doing our job up here, our, our staff not doing their job. So, I think we're, we all are in agreement of that. In October, we were reminded that even in a safe, low-crime city, the job of any police officer is dangerous. Officer Cody Cecil was shot. He was shot through a closed door. He was serving an arrest warrant that, from the Middletown Police Department. It wasn't even a Clayton crime. His actions and reactions were highly professional and utilized his excellent training. Our police department, as well as our fire department, goes through extensive training, continuous training, and he was just the picture-perfect training that day. He self-applied a tourniquet, he remained calm, and he kept his position. The scene at the hospital was unbelievable. Police officers and support from every PD in our region was there, supporting him and supporting our city and our police department. It was a, it was tragedy all the way around. It's, the tragic scene is a reminder for us to remember the heavy burdens our first responders play, in, not only in Clayton, but all of our first responders. Our commitment to infrastructure is unwavering. In 2023 alone, Clayton paved seven streets and secured a safety grant for Phase One of North Main Street, which will be improving traffic flow and pedestrian safety. Salem Street was paved up in the Old Village, Phillipsburg Union, there was paving done there. And I, I want to add that many of these large projects like this are due through grants and partnerships, mostly through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. They're our big partner in when it comes to streets. So, thanks to them for their help also. Union Road, Talmadge Road, Salem Crossing, Clayton Park, Upper Parking Lot, Clayton Park, Park itself, they all received paving. We, we did crack seal in some areas that have already received updated paving, like the Seville Platte. We, we worked on striping all the roads again. Our, we built another salt building, which we sorely needed, at our Service Depot down on, at, down off of Main Street. We did complete renovations on Westbrook Park bathrooms. We paved all the paths there. The tennis courts are painted. We made pickleball courts. All that's been painted. Clayton Park parking blocks, the creek washouts were done, all the field work was done. Northview Park, we, we did extensive work down there. We had a new interactive, is that the right word? Interactive, not, all-inclusive playground built down there that's just fantastic for those, those folks that utilize that. That park has been completely transformed, you know. Two years ago, it's completely overgrown, and now it's super nice. So, if you live in those areas, hopefully, you know, you get a chance to get out and see those. We had all ADA compliant facilities put in. The restrooms at Westbrook Park have been closed for 20 years, ten, probably 20 years. I mean, I don't know if they've ever been open since I could ever remember it. They're completely redone, ADA compliant, light, they're well-lit, very easy access, just a huge, huge turnaround. Again, you know, new paving down there. Our, our leaf pickup, you know, was great again this year. Snow and salt control, especially with the new salt barn, you know, it should be better than ever. Hopefully, we won't get much snow, but, you know, we're kind of doing pretty good so far. We haven't had to use much, if any, yet. Community events have brought us together throughout the year, from the senior lunch and learn programs to dance parties, fireworks on Labor Day, movies in the park, and festive celebrations like costumes and carvings, breakfast with Santa, reunions, weddings, retirements, rotary, Bloodmobile Golf, Northmont Golf, golf outings, golf leagues, fundraisers, the golf simulator leagues. All of these have been held at Meadow Brook at Clayton. I'm happy to say that 2023 was the first full year of being a city-run amenity. We've always had other caterers in there that run the kitchens and things like that. And thanks to Ms. Elaine right here and her staff, they, they do a fantastic job over there. You know, we, we, I think we all agree, we, we still have a ways to go. You know, the facility's so huge, and there's still work to be done there. But we were able to hire a, a sales manager over there and another part-time associate. And I'm happy and proud to say 2023 was the best year we've experienced over there since taking ownership in 2015. So, we're getting there. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. It was really a smart move to take it over. We had some personnel changes. I'm just going to name two. We had, actually, I'll name three. We had our Economic Development Director, Jack Kuntz, who many of you know, left us and went over and became the city manager in Brookville. So, we're, you know, I'm, I'm first to say, I told him, I'm mixed about this because I love Jack here, he did us a great job, but I'm super happy. It's a big career promotion for him, and I'm super happy for him and his family over there. I've actually talked to Jack since he's been over there, and he's still getting acclimated, but he, I think he feel, really feels like he made the right move. So, I'm real happy with that. Another personnel, we also have a new council member sitting right here, Ryan. So, we're, you know, we welcome you, Ryan Farmer, onto the council. That was a, a big change for us. And also Ellen is here. Yeah, she's our, I want to say city planner, but that's not right. What is it? Zoning and GIS manager. I knew, I was close. But she's hit the ground running also, and we're so happy to have you here too, so. Those are all good changes for the, for the city of Clayton. We did some other kind of random things that, again, they're, sometimes they're a little bit behind the scenes, but again, this, these are part of the things that sets us apart and, and makes us what, you know, what we are as a city. We became our own certified building department this year. So, we've always, we've always worked at our, our building inspections and things through the county. We love the county, but they've had their own issues down there as far as personnel. And what, what we were finding is, all of a sudden, many of our projects, not only on the building, but some other stuff too, was taking longer and longer. And so, we decided, well, we didn't want to do that. So, we ended up taking over that also for ourselves. And I think so far, it's been fantastic too. If I'm, if I misspeak and say, but I think it's been a great, great thing for us too. We, we, we had a nice collaboration with the CTC over at the MVCTC. They're doing some signage for us. And so, we work with their students, with their teach, you know, teacher-led student group, and they've been doing, been doing some park signs for us. So, it helps us build that bond that we have with those students over there. We also initiated a mural project at Meadow Brook in partnership with the Northmont Art Club. So, again, it gets student, gives students a chance to do something public that they're interested in. They're an art club, so they're interested in that, and it allows them to, you know, get a little bit of taste of working with the city. So, we love that. Last thing I want to mention is the city of Clayton has once again been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So, what that means is, I think it's about 16 years in a row that our financial director, Kevin Schweitzer, he's not here tonight, but has received this award. And that, that says a lot about the way that we spend money, the way we've approached money. It's, it's how he budgets, we're on time with our submissions, there's no questions on, you know, question, unanswered questions on the forms, and it passes muster at a high, high level. So, we're real proud of him, and we're all, and Amanda too. Kevin does report to Amanda. But I think it's, says a lot about our city and, and our staff and our council that we do recognize that spending money is super important. In 2023, Clayton's vibrant community spirit has shown brighter than ever. As we bid farewell to this year, we look forward to even greater achievements and share, shared moments in 2024 and years to come. Okay? That's it. Thank you. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is our clerk's report.
First, you have before you the council work session minutes of January 18th, 2024.
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Motion to approve the report as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Farmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that passed unanimously. Will you read the next?
You also have before you the council meeting minutes of January 18th, 2024.
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Motion to approve the report as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous also. Okay, our next item is old business. So, will you read that ordinance?
Ordinance, or do?
Yeah, we need to untable it first. So, we need a motion and vote to untable.
I'll move to untable ordinance, the first ordinance on old business.
Second?
Okay, there's a motion to untable the ordinance O-122328 by Mr. Bachman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ordinance is untabled. Will you read the ordinance?
Ordinance O-122328, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sell a 3.7884-acre parcel of property located at the corner of National Road and Pro Action Drive and bearing parcel ID number M60031020112 to Bella Sorrella Pizza Company LLC for a price of $200,000 and subject to provisions concerning forgiveness of the loan for the purchase price in return for maintaining an agreed level of employment and other conditions as contained within a certain purchase and sale agreement with the purchaser and declaring an emergency.
What do you want us to do, Martina?
I'd like-
I'll move to turn down the motion, or turn down the ordinance.
I'd like, I, I make a motion that we- Table it indefinitely. I couldn't think of the word. Table the motion indefinitely.
Have to do an action for that, or can we just not? Then it'll always be on the agenda.
You-
It's not going to be there anymore.
Next ordinance, you're going to take care of this one, right?
Correct. So, if I understand Mr. Gorman's motion, he has made a motion to remove it from the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so, he is correct. If we motion to table it indefinitely, then at some point, we could bring it back. So, I would suggest if there is a second to Mr. Gorman's motion to, to remove it from the agenda, then we move forward with that. Would you like to remove your motion to table it indefinitely?
I'll remove my motion.
Then, on the table is Mr. Gorman's motion, which has now been seconded by Mr. Merkel, so now we're ready to vote on it.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That ordinance has been removed. Okay, and then, so the next item is new business. Will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-022401, an ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Kate's Pizza Place LLC and further authorizing transfer at closing for the purchase price of $50,000 plus closing cost and broker fee of the public property bearing parcel ID number M60031020112 located at the corner of National Road and Pro Action Drive within the city of Clayton, Ohio and containing 3.7884 acres.
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Motion to approve the ordinance as written by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Farmer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous.
I guess, I do have one question. So, if it's reported on that it's Kate's Pizza Place, is that like in conjunction with Bella Sorrella? Okay. So, I just would, the reason why I was asking is I know we'll probably all get questions saying, who's Kate's Pizza Place? We want to be able to say it's Bella Sorrella, so, thank you.
Are you Kate?
Sorry. So, okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify in case anybody watching it is confused. Obviously, there's been rumors that Bella Sorrella is building, so, awesome. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-022402, an ordinance to repeal current Clayton Codified Ordinance Chapter 1519 fireworks and replace the updated version of Clayton Codified Ordinance Chapter 1519 fireworks appended heretofu as Exhibit A.
Does anyone want to speak to this? Chief's not here, so I don't know if you want to see-
This is the legislation that Mr. or that member Henning requested at the last meeting. I mean, chief and, both chiefs, you know, expressed their opinions last time. At this point, it's up to council what you want to do.
I'll move for approval.
Sir, a second?
Could we get a better description in layman's terms? What this means is means no fireworks anywhere in the city? Is that essentially what it means?
No fireworks in the city except for a licensed firework company. Exactly. So, it, what it provides for is if you are a licensed firework company, you can apply to the city for a permit and set off in accordance with the, you know, provisions of the, the code. But yes, it would ban, and nobody else would be permitted without that permit to set off fireworks within the city.
Well, there's our, there are exceptions made, but it's for lesser consumer-type items such as cap guns and sparklers and such, but I, I just, I, if we have concerns about fireworks, my concern would be you're putting sparklers in the hands of small children, which, you know, hot spark, uh, sparklers are 1,800 degrees. You know, 1,800-degree burning metal rod in small children's hands is a problem. And I, I think we, there's other ways we can approach this to get solutions to our problem. I would think we should really concentrate on education and information before we take this route. And I, I would encourage that we add something to the existing fireworks ordinance that basis, not this one, but the one we have on hand to in place, something dealing with education.
We don't have anything on hand, do we?
What was adopted and is currently in the code was what was adopted prior to the law changing, allowing consumers to set off fireworks. So, what is currently on the books is consistent with what Ohio revised code was prior to that change by the legislature a couple of years ago.
So, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? In hearing, no second, there's no vote?
There's no vote. And I mean, that's fine. I will just make sure that when I have residents come to me with questions, I, I can say that, you know, I've had the law director put this on our meeting, I made a motion for it, and no other council member made a motion to second it for us to take a vote on it, because I will continue to get inquiries, especially in my more dense ward too. So, I'll just let everybody know that.
Well, before we take your approach of being kind of confrontational about this, I think the point being is that we need to have something available for education. That seems to be the thing that really comes into play is educating people, because, I'm sorry, I don't care how much legislation you, you put in place, if you put fireworks, even when they were not legal in the state of Ohio to shoot off, people were still shooting them off. And, you know, it, you're not going to stop it, and the only way you can do is educate.
I agree. Education's important, but we did have a resident at the last meeting come and express and show exhibits as to what she experiences on holidays, and, well, timeline's way past holidays. So, I'm just saying, when residents come to me and say, let's do something, I can say, I tried, the law director proposed something, it got no second, and council didn't want to vote on it.
What the, what the resident brought was what happened by a gun, right? Not, not by a firecracker.
It happened with a firearm, but it also happened with-
Firearm, but not a firecracker. And there is a large difference there, Kenny.
If we're going to have a concern about a gun being shot into someone's, someone's house, which I would be concerned with, then maybe we should, maybe we should ban guns in, in the city of Clayton. I mean, that, that would resolve that problem.
I don't think anybody wants to do that. It's a constitution, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's like, let's, let's address the situation and not, not go overboard. Let's do education. I mean, that's what seems to, what other, other municipalities that have the ordinance on place to allow for, for consumers to have fireworks is education.
I've made a note, just talked to Chief Garver about education. We'll put it in the newsletter, we can push things out on social media closer to the holidays that the fireworks are permitted.
I had asked at the last meeting if we could educate and put it in the newsletter to update residents the safety measures and the current status of it too as well. But how is it going to be policed? That's the problem. People will still, no matter what, will let fireworks off, and how are we going to police it?
I'll just add, my concern is being in Ward One, very open area, rural, I think folks out there, if they want to shoot fireworks, they can do it responsibly within safe distances. And it, I find it unfortunate, we're trying to clamp down on the entire city because of a few selected responsible folks. And so, that, that's why I didn't call for a second. If there was a way to try to account for the more open areas and having some responsible citizens, if they want to shoot fireworks, how we do that, I don't know, but that, that's just what's on my mind about it.
Okay. So, there's no vote on the second ordinance. Will you read the third ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-022403, an ordinance repealing ordinance number O-052308, which adopted the planning commission's recommendation to approve the specified conditions, the application of Clayton Property Group Inc. Doing Business as Arbor Homes, for a change in zoning from Rural Conservation District Two, RCD Two, to Plan Development District PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for 42.99 acres of property located along Phillipsburg Union Road and Haber Road and bearing parcel ID number M60030060009 to be called Salem Springs within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I make a motion, we table this ordinance.
Take it.
I'll just have one thing. If we table it, there's no reason to table it, because if we table it, the election's over now, before we vote on it twice and give it 30 days to pass. So, there's no reason to table it. We might as well just vote it down, because it's going to be voted down anyway. It's still going to appeal on, appear on the ballots in the 19th of March, and, and only way we can get it off of there is to have a- the only way we can get it off of there is to have a, pass it tonight and have a special meeting next week and do the same thing then, and then we'll have it in before, five days before the election. And, and if you do, look at the calendar, there's only 14 days left after the 15th in this month, and then there's, you got 16 before then, and the election's on the 19th, and that's not five days before. And the 16th is a Saturday, which means it wouldn't be turned in until the 18th, which, um, is the day before the election. So, if we table it, we might as well vote it down and get it over with. No reason to bring it up three, two weeks from now, because then it'll be water over the dam.
Well, we still have a motion and a second, so I'd like to go ahead and do a vote. So, uh, yeah, I'm going to do a roll call on this one.
Farmer?
No.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachmann?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. Okay. That ordinance is tabled.
Well, I have a question. You had sent an email to people essentially saying that we have to be a special meeting. It would have been next week, correct?
Yes, a special meeting would have to occur next week.
Okay. Well, just for everyone's information, I would not, I'm not going to be available next week, so I would not be here for any special meeting. So, in all fairness, you would not have a full council voting. My thing is that if this is important, is this, I, I think my vote should be included, and I would not be here.
Will you read the next, the, the first of two resolutions, please?
Resolution R-02-24-13. A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept bid and award contract for residential solid waste collection to Rumpke of Ohio, Inc., for a three-year period commencing July 1st, 2024, with an option of two additional years in one-year increments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so, we went out to bid, uh, for our, um, recycling and refuse collection and disposal. We received two bids, one from Rumpke and one from our current contractor, Republic Services. Uh, after, I did, uh, did compile the results, and they are in your packet under Attachment A. Um, as you can see, the proposed bid by Rumpke, um, would have a 48 cent decrease per month, uh, for each resident, uh, for the first term, as well as, um, that's just on the, um, collection, and it would be an additional savings with the, um, actual totter, if anybody is, um, renting a totter. So, yes, yeah.
The bid we look at here says, um, includes trash cart. Does it also include a recycling cart?
It is.
Does both of them then?
That is correct, yes. And they're both 95 gallon.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution by Mr. Gorman, seconded by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that that passed unanimously.
Did that also include, um, the, the large dumpsters for sweep clean?
It does. Along with the dumpsters in the, um, um, at the fire station as well as, um, at Meadowbrook and here.
So, it's basically continuation?
It is. Thank you.
Good question. Uh, will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R-02-24-14. A resolution appointing Mayor William D. Duncan to the Montgomery County 911 Program Review Committee pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 128.06A5.
Amanda, I have another question, okay? Um, it's not really a question. Uh, the four people that are already appointed are from the south of Dayton, and we're pointing, we're voting to appoint another fellow for, another mayor, I'm sure he's well qualified for the position, from the south of Dayton. Does the north end, north part of the, of Montgomery County not have any say on 911? I don't even know what this committee does.
They, they review the 911 operations in the state of Ohio or in our county, but the nominations for those positions were made by the Dayton Area Managers Association, Mayor's and Managers Association.
I mean, one member's from Kettering, one's from Washington Township, the city of Dayton, of course.
Yeah.
And, and this fellow is from Oakwood. And, and if the township appoints a township south of town, then the north end can, uh, they don't get 911, or we won't get 911 then, or what's going to happen?
No, we will get 911. Um, it's, that's just the, the composition. That's who they've nominated. If you have another nomination, if you want to nominate Mike, we can do that, and I can send it over and...
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, seconded by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that's unanimous also. Moving on to our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of items for you this evening. Um, first, uh, Member Gorman had requested that Auditor Carl Keith come to a City of Clayton council meeting for a work session to discuss property values in the city of Clayton. Um, his schedule aligned with our February 15th meeting, so he will be here on Thursday, February 15th at 7:00 PM, um, to discuss property values in the city of Clayton. Uh, the Laura's Loft buildings are demolished, so we now have nice, open ground there, um, on that corner. Um, the GFOA award, Member Kelly had requested that they come in and do a presentation for, um, Kevin Schweitzer, our finance director. Um, I reached out to them. They no longer do in-person awards. They haven't done that, um, I think since COVID, but they did say that they would send us a video presentation. So, when I receive that, I will bring that to council, and then if Mayor Stevens wants to present Kevin with the award after the video presentation, we can have that. I will inform council when that's received. Um, unfortunately, at Meadowbrook, um, on last Wednesday evening, uh, we had a piece that covers the overhang by the stairs outside of the pro shop. It fell off, um, exposing the, um, the steel beams. Um, it was caused by our gutters being blocked. Uh, we did have someone come out and clean out the gutters, and we are receiving quotes on the amount that it'll cost to do that repair work. So, when we have that, I will also, um, bring that to council. Um, just so everyone knows, CCA is providing tax assistance again this year. Um, you can schedule an appointment by calling 216-857-3174. Um, and the dates available are Friday, March 1st, Wednesday, March 13th, Monday, March 25th, and April 10th from 9:00 to 3:00 PM, and that is here in council chambers at the city of Clayton. You can also go to other municipalities that utilize CCA. Um, those, um, dates and places are available on our website if you go there and look. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Amanda, I've got a question. With what you provided on income tax ballot language in the back?
Yes.
Uh, could you, I guess, my understanding of the term levy, I, I must be off. What, what's the difference between calling this a levy versus a city income tax?
Um, well, we're levying a tax on the income. So, I mean, that's, that's basically it. I'm sorry, I, that's the only explanation I have. And I mean, and the language that you see drafted here was drafted by the Board of Elections, not by the city.
Okay. The other question I had was, and the tables below, um...
Those are not included on the ballot. That is just for council's information, so if you have anyone ask what the difference would be if, should the levy pass? Should the residents decide to pass the levy? That's what the difference and the obligation to the city of Clayton would be if you work outside of the city of Clayton.
Okay. Because when I'm reading this, being a, an employee at Wright-Patterson, if this passes, my, my city income tax goes up 1%.
It does.
But this table says it doesn't go up at all. Am I reading that correctly?
If, what, do you want Wright-Patt to be listed on the table?
Oh, no. No, I mean, uh, for those that work in Clayton.
It would, yes.
Okay. Because it has a zero there. I'm trying, uh, am I reading this table wrong?
It's because you would get a 100% credit.
Yes. You would get 100%, I mean, you get 100% credit now because there's no income tax at the base, so you're just paying all of the income tax to Clayton already. The 1.5 comes directly to Clayton. We're not, there's no, you're not paying income tax to anyone else. But if you were to work in the city of Dayton, you know, right now, you're paying 2.5 to, um, city of Dayton and 0.75 to the city of, um, Clayton, I'm sorry, 2.5 to the city of Dayton and 0.75 to the city of Clayton. And should this pass, you would no longer pay the 0.75 to the city of Clayton. You would just be paying to the city of Dayton, resulting in a 0.75 decrease in your income tax obligation.
Okay.
I have, I have to say, I'm going to interject here, um, this, this issue has taken way more of my time than any other issue that we've had. I mean, people are mad about this, and it comes up every year at this time because it's tax time. And this is where you hear people talking about Clayton double taxes and things. Well, we don't double tax. That's, that's the wrong language to use. But again, it's thrown out there so much that you, you know, it's become commonplace to say, "Well, you double tax people." Well, we don't do that. This, this would be a great, it, it, it was done, I think it was done in the right spirit when it was, you know, when it was initially done, but I think it's time to move on, and I, I just think this would be a, really a big thing for, for Clayton, you know, for us, so...
Can I suggest a, a third table added to this? And that would be to list what the tax rate is for those cities listed.
Sure. We can, yes, we can do that, what the tax rate currently is for those cities that are listed.
Because a lot of people probably don't know what exactly they pay in their municipality where they work. I mean, Mr. Farmer mentioned Wright-Patt. There was always been a kind of a point of contention for Fairborn and Riverside that employees within the base don't pay income tax to those cities. So, but if, if we have a listing of what those rates are, then we can actually better compare for people essentially what the difference would be for what they would pay now versus then.
I can get that out to you tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else from our city manager?
That's all I have.
I'd just like to, um, on what Amanda said there about next meeting, when Carl Keith, our auditor, is coming, I've heard Carl speak before on this topic, and if you have any questions about your reevaluation, you should come to this meeting, and Carl will have the answers for you. I feel quite certain.
Anything else for Amanda? Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next on our, um, docket is our visitors' comments, and I'm going to run over and get the sheet, see if anyone signed in. So, it looks like everyone signed in. Thanks for that. Um, it looks like only one person wants to speak, and that's Mr. Lieberman. So, if you'll come up and state your name and address, and if anyone else decides to change their mind and speak afterwards, you'll be able to do that. As a reminder, it's five minutes.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Uh, my name is Dennis Lieberman. I reside at 7475 Kimmel Road, and I, um, want to address only one issue this evening, and that issue is the ordinance which was just tabled. So, this might now be moot, but it may not be. So, uh, that's why I want to address it still. That's ordinance number 002-2403, which would repeal ordinance number 00523-08 relating to the Salem Springs development. There's two issues I want to address as it relates to this ordinance. The first is, um, whether it is a good idea to take away from the people of Clayton the right to vote on this ordinance. Uh, the second will be whether Mr. Farmer, Councilmember Farmer, uh, should vote or participate or either informally or formally because of a conflict of interest. First, I want to address the issue of whether the people of Clayton should vote. So, there was a referendum that was spread throughout the city of Clayton, almost, I don't know, 900 and some people, uh, were eventually, had valid signatures on that referendum. The referendum was to give them a right to vote on the ordinance that we had passed. They either say, "Yeah, we, we like that ordinance," or "No, we don't." While that referendum was being circulated by a issue-oriented group called Keep It Rural, they, uh, achieved all of those, uh, signatures, and were promising people that they're going to get to vote if we have the referendum that is, um, passed, if you get enough signatures on the petition. That's why now I, I'm, I'm appalled at the fact that the very people who passed that petition now want to take the vote away from the people of Clayton, who have a right to make this determination because of the referendum. I don't understand it. It, it, it just makes no sense to me unless there's a Machiavellian thing going on here that I don't understand, where you get the people, promise them they get to vote on a referendum, and then, uh, when you get the person on council that you want, you think that you can then get rid of it by behind closed doors without transparency by council. So, that bothers me. It bothers me a lot as a, as a citizen of Clayton that you're trying to take my vote away, because I should have a right to vote on that also. What bothers me even more is the second issue of a conflict of interest. And I can honestly tell you that in my belief, in my research, and I spent a lot of time researching this because I didn't want to say something that is not accurate. And, and I mean this in all due respect to Councilman Farmer. This is not bitter. He kicked my butt in the election, so, you know, there's no question about that. There is a question about what ethics you can do when you sit on this council, because this conflict of interest isn't just yours. This conflict of interest is the city of Clayton's. They have a right to protect the potential conflict of interest or even an appearance of impropriety whenever it appears. And Martina is the Law Director for the city, who we go to for advice. And I don't know whether she has advised you that you have a conflict or not. Whatever she has advised you, you should follow, because if you don't, you are subjecting both the city of Clayton and yourself to penalties. Now, why do I believe that you should, you have a conflict of interest? Let me, let me run through the facts, okay? Number one, that last spring before this council, under oath at this very podium, you said that you had a property which would be directly impacted and because of Pig Eye Creek, which runs next to where this development was supposed to be, and the flooding that you already get from Iron Gate, you showed us, passed around to all of us, uh, a video of the water coming up under your bridge and about how worried you were is going to take away this bridge. It impacted me as a council member at the time, because I wanted to make sure that that didn't happen. You called me, and in that telephone call, which you said you recorded, we talked about that again and about the impact it could have on your property. That is a direct conflict. You don't have to be within the notice provisions of a piece of property in order to have a conflict of interest. If something is going to actually impact your property, that's a conflict. A third thing, other than the, the telephone call, is that you served on the petition committee for Keep It Rural, which is designed to, as I mentioned earlier, to get the referendum on the ballot. And if anybody's interested, I have a copy of the petition if you need to see it, as well as the other people who were on that petition. What bothers me even more is not just that you were on that petition, not just that you were a circulator, and you and your wife together circulated, um, approximately 12, I think, uh, different part petitions, and you signed a petition. That doesn't bother me as much as the fact that of the $4,000 that you raised for your campaign, approximately 1,700 of it came from people that lived on Haber or Phillipsburg Union Road, which are directly impacted by this development. Sir, if I took money from the development as a council member, I think everybody would be raising Cain that I have a conflict and I shouldn't vote. The same is true of you. You took this money. I have your financial report right here. $1,747. I have your financial report right here, $1,747. 1,770 of it was from Doug Bias, who has also served with you on the Petition Committee. Finally, your attorney, who you claim to have asked whether you have a conflict, is a treasurer of your campaign committee. Sir, I don't know how you can say you don't have a conflict. The person who defines that conflict sits right over there. It's Martina. She can, she's the one that defines it for the city. Whatever she tells you, you should do. I had to do it when I was a council member at least six or seven times. You need to do that, because I will tell you this, if you don't, there is an Ohio Ethics Commission which will review it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Thank you, sir. So has anyone else changed their mind and decided to speak? Imagine that.
Oh, my God. You missed me. I've been up here for a while.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Alicia York, 10635 Haber Road. I just want to address the one thing about the whole, we went out telling everybody that they wanted to vote. That was words we said, but initially it was, it should have never gotten to this point. And I said, since it has gotten to that point, now we have to fight it that way. Nobody wants to go out and vote it. They should have, they all agreed that it shouldn't have ever got this far. So that kind of offended me in a way. I get what you're saying, but when I went to door-to-door, because I was the one that did it, most people thought it was ridiculous that we had to go to the point to take it to a vote. They didn't say, oh, yay, now I get a vote for it. It's like, you should have never had to go that far. So to me, that's frustrating because you're using that against me because we did it because we had to, though everybody agreed we should have never had to do that. And I'm pretty sure the developer, and I could be wrong, I'll go back, because I haven't watched the videos like you have, obviously, I thought they said that the Pig Eye Creek would not be affected. So that being said, he, Mr. Farmer, and I don't know, maybe he's done his own research too, technically is not at all directly affected, because supposedly it doesn't affect him now, right? We thought it did, but the developer said it wouldn't. So technically, it doesn't affect him anymore. He's not against the land that's being used or being built on, like us across the street. And I'm also offended that you're using his financials for the whole campaign against him, because obviously, we're going to support him. He's, he's on our side in a sense that he doesn't think it should be built there, too. Regardless if it affects him or not, he doesn't think it should be built there. So who cares? Who supports him and gives him his money? It's the right of us as citizens to put our money towards what we believe in. And we believe in not doing the development over there, so in my, I'm trying to keep it together, because I was kind of offended about the way you attacked him, and in general, the whole thing. There's more to the picture than that. It should have never gotten to the point where we have to take it to the ballot. And I personally think it kind of makes the city look bad, that they had so many people fighting and so many people on the Keep It Rural, that now the city's so against everybody in the city that we have to take it to the ballot. I was hoping it got repealed so that you guys didn't look bad and had to bring this huge thing in. It's probably going to be on the news, and now everybody's going to see, oh, they didn't turn it down. Now citizens have to fight for the right. So in my sense of repeal would have been good for the city, just to be like, okay, I get it. The citizens don't want it. We probably should listen to them. So in my point of view, that's how I thought of it. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak? State your name and address for the record.
Polit Farmer, 11735 Old Mill Road. One thing I'd like to clarify is, I'm not sure many people understand, that we actually have an Arbor Homes across the street from us. It's just one field over, and it's in Union. The property that Union owns actually butts up to Old Mill Road, so there's a high likelihood we'll have Arbor Homes right across the street from us. This isn't about trying to keep a development away from our property. So, you know, that's, we chose to live there. We knew that was the case when we moved in. That's what it is. The other thing I'd like to address is, the phone call that my husband recorded, I asked him to record that. After my daughter died, I didn't, I had a lot of trouble remembering what people said, and I didn't hear things correctly. I asked for that, and I wasn't present at the phone call, so I asked for the recording. This wasn't him recording behind his back, and he let him know. And he said, do you mind if I record you my wife would like to have? So I would like to put that issue to rest, and I really would prefer not to hear that anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak that didn't sign up? You would? Well, step up and state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Tanya Henson. I'm with Republic Services. I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for the last 20 years of partnership that we have had together. We appreciate your business, and, you know, hopefully, we'll be back again in the future. But thank each and every one of you.
I just want to tell you, actually, since I now know who you are, the gentleman who does our street on Skylark, on the regular trash pickup every week, he does phenomenal. And not that, I mean, you can share this with whoever, but around Christmas, my son had to get him a Christmas gift, because he loves to look out the window and like wave to him. So it did, I did hate to see that Rumkey's rates were much less than yours, but if you could somehow relay, whoever the gentleman is, I don't know his name, at least we'll have him until July, that does Skylark, his interactions with my three-year-old are phenomenal. So Clayton, my son, has absolutely loved him, and he's been, he's been our serviceman for quite some time, so. Now that I know who you're with, I just wanted to share that.
Well, thank you, and I will make sure I let him know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our council and mayor's comments. We'll start with Mr. Bachmann.
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
The only thing that I have to say is, thank God, we still have freedom of speech, and I appreciate everyone's concerns, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Merkel?
Nothing more to add this evening.
Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Henning?
I have a list of things, and I do want to say a couple of things in regards to what Mr. Lieberman said first, because it did sound as if this was a threat and this meeting would, the minutes would be reflective in a Ohio Ethics Commission hearing. So as Mr. Lieberman knows, individuals who donate to campaigns, political candidates, obviously, they donate to people who they're more in line with, whether it's Democrats giving to Democrats, Republicans giving to Republicans. In this instance, it was citizens giving to an individual who was running for office. I find it hard to believe that you can say that someone's donations from a particular street are the reason why he voted the way he or she votes. It's no different than a political party candidate voting how their party wants them to vote. So I just wanted to say that. And Mr. Gorman has stated many times, and I agree with him, the development puts at risk the ability for the income tax levy to pass. We feel, a couple of us feel, that it will enable citizens to vote no and no on both issues four and five. And that's one of the reasons why I voted to just stop it now. The citizen, Mr. York spoke at the last meeting asking for this. He stated that this was now money that they would have to spend against issue four, and, you know, that's citizens' money, they're having to now spend on something I don't believe in. So that's obviously why I voted for that. In regards to the state of the city, I wrote down the list of everything that you shared, Mayor, and it was so much in 2023, there were obviously a couple of things that I forgot about. So great developments all throughout the year. Bella Sorrella, we're excited for you. This is something that we've been talking about forever. We've seen the reception at Old Scratch's new pizza place up in Troy, and they've had a tremendous warm welcoming to that community, and we know that you've talked and thought about going to Miami County, so we're so glad that you stuck to your home here in Clayton. It means a lot to us and the Northmont community as a whole. I am sure we'll be very supportive of you. And finally, Amanda, I know that we had discussed it before, but the art trail idea at the parks, as the mayor said about the mural during his state of the city, I think it's still something I'd like to see in the parks, if we could somehow partner with the class to help students get out there, get active, and put forth like, I know some communities have like a QR code that will pair with each art piece, and it tells like about the student who created the piece, et cetera. And I think it could be a really like scavenger hunt, physical activity for kids to do all throughout our parks here in the city of Clayton, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Farmer?
All right, a couple of things. Councilmembers, I hope you saw the email this week. I sent you a graphic for what I proposed for doing a value-based sort of spending prioritization. Hopefully, it's not too abstract. I went through a couple of iterations trying to make it clear. Maybe sometime in the next month or two, we could do the first one, so be thinking about what the city values, how you capture it in maybe some short phrases or terms. And we'll, and I'll need a little bit of prep time for getting that together, and I promise I don't take a lot of your time. I think after three workshops, I'll be able to pull it all together, and you'll say, aha, I see what you're doing. But just need some time with you to get some data collection, and it will be a public kind of workshop. With regards to my ability to vote on the ordinance, obviously, I want to address a few things on that. I was spearheading the referendum petitioners committee. I did resign from that before I took office, so there wouldn't have that conflict of interest. And I'll tell you that I went door-to-door. I talked to those people, and I, maybe one out of 15 or 20 said, I'll sign it just to vote. The rest of the people are saying, I saw hundreds of people show up at council and not get listened by that, listened to by that council. So I can't wait to, I will sign this so we can turn that vote around. So it's not all about getting to vote, it's about people didn't want it. That's why they signed. Also, I'd like to say that this is, this ordinance is a referendum vote. It affects the entire city. If you want to tell me I can't vote on this, then you might as well tell me not vote on income tax, because I might be voting against that, because I don't want to pay more money to the city. So to me, that's in that same category. I know I'm not a lawyer, but maybe I did say a holiday end last night, I don't know. But in terms of the water runoff, I would say that's anecdotal. It's an observation, as an analyst, I would say, give me the study that proves that. And frankly, the developer stood up here, and I wish I had pulled out the quote, he said that the runoff would be the same, if not better. So if it's going to be better, how can I possibly have a conflict? So are you going to believe me, or are you going to believe the developer? And when I started to learn more and more about this, I also learned that we need a watershed study in this region. That one little 43-acre plot, and how water falls on it and runs off, does it consider water coming from miles away from runoff? Because that's where the main, anecdotally, and talking to people when you follow the trail of water, that's what's going on. So looking at that, do I have a conflict of interest or not? I'll tell you, Ms. Dillon advised me that we just need to write up for the OEC to review. Oh, was that?
Attorney-client privilege.
Oh, sorry. So she, I'll just say, she has advised me, and it's up to me on whether I follow it or not, so. But if we don't vote on it, council, that's fine. I know there are a lot of people are fired up and ready to go, and you're going to see a firestorm leading up to March 19th, and it's not going to look good for the city. You read about our other cities that are here, that their councils are responding to far lesser residents than what we had to come in, and they've changed their mind about putting in developments or putting in whatever. But then there's Clayton, and that can't be, make our city real appealing for someone looking around, oh, I don't want to live there because they're going to lose their residents. They push a, they pushed a ordinance all the way to referendum to where they had to vote on it. So I looked at this as, this was maybe an exit ramp as a council, just let's get it off the table, move on, as Mr. Henning mentioned. I do think that when people are coming out to vote no on this, they're just going to go right to the income tax and vote no on that, too. So it could be double trouble. So, said my piece, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I really don't have anything else to say tonight. Appreciate everyone, the level of decorum that we've had here. And I just want to say, like I say, every meeting, thanks to our staff, thanks to our council, our dedication, our engagement is there, and we're trying to make the city of Clayton better, and thanks for all the good work that everyone does. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll do it for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. The meeting is adjourned.